Hi.
Yeah.
Aileen.
Hey, there's Bill. I haven't seen him in ages. Hey, Billy.
It should be. Yep, it started. Go ahead.
Hey, Peg. Did you get snow in Florida?
I am.
Did you get snow?
Yeah, right.
You won some?
It got down to thirty-five to this last night.
Okay, it's six thirty-two. Let's get started.
Can I ask a question? How do people sign in to speak at the public comment? Do they do it in the chat?
Aileen.
When we get to courtesy of the floor.
Okay.
If they want to sign in now to the chat, say they want to speak, that would help her, or they could raise their hand during courtesy of the floor.
Okay, I wasn't sure what the protocol was for that on the Zoom. If there was something formal.
Okay, everyone, let's call this county council meeting to order. Kevin Ma, would you please say the pledge for us?
Sure, Ken. I pledge allegiance
to the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands.
One nation
under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, wow. Look at the picture.
Wow, look at the flag.
All right.
Flag.
Who did that?
Good job.
I thought it would be better looking at that than all of us various postures.
Yeah, that makes up for the way we sound. Okay.
Okay, Ms. Embel, please call the roll.
Hey. Mr. Kusick.
Present.
Mrs. Ferraro.
Here.
Mr. Giovanni.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Lot.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Present.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Here.
Ms. Zirinsky.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We need to approve the minutes of January twenty-first.
I'll make a motion.
Twenty?
Second.
Was that Mr. Myers? And was that Mr. Heckman?
Yes, I said nothing. No, I said.
That was Mr. Giovanni for the second. Voice acclamation, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? So moved. If there will have courtesy of the floor, Aileen, would you give the instructions?
If you are in Zoom, you can raise your hand, or if you're on the phone, you can press star nine. I have Jean Versteg wanting to make a comment.
Okay, Jean, you'll get five minutes starting now. And just to remind council, this is their time to speak and not ask questions, so thank you for that.
Hi, for some reason, it's not letting me share my video. I apologize for that. But I wanted to speak on, I understand there's a resolution that is going to be on the agenda that is against House Bill thirty-eight. And I want to speak in support of that resolution that I believe I would, I would love to see the council support this resolution and pass it. The HB thirty-eight is a bill that deals with judicial districting. It's a, it's a bill that's passed now through, through two sessions of the state legislature, and it has been tabled, but it's still a very significant risk to our state. The legislature can sit on it, and they have two years to bring it back up. Judicial districting would be very detrimental to our court system in the state. It would put our judges suspect to being under pressure by the legislature, under pressure by a limited number of the constituents. Our judicial system is meant to be impartial. They're meant to be for the entire state. They're meant to give support to the laws of the state and not to just one section of their state. And allowing this districting to happen would, would put a lot of strain on all of those qualities of our judicial system in the state. I, our legislature, like I said, they, they still have an opportunity to pass this, and I think we need to get in front of that and send a very strong, clear message that this is not what we want for our state. No other state in the country actually does this, and we would be the only ones, and there's a reason for that, and it's not a good one. And we need to send this strong message so that should they chose to try to bring this back forward and put it on, on the floor, we need to be able to tell them, no, we don't want this, and not allow them to say, but nobody's ever opposed this. We really need to send a strong message. We need to stay vigilant on this. And we need to hold our legislators accountable for trying to take action like this, which is taking away the people's right to vote for their judiciary. If this would pass, right now, we get to vote for thirty-one of the judges in the, in the state. And it would be whittled down to each person would only be voting for three. And it would completely take this out of the people's hands, and the judiciary is for the people, not for the legislature. It, it puts the judges at risk of being gerrymanhed out of their district if the legislature is unhappy with something that they ruled on. It takes that impartiality away from them, and it puts such a risk to that. And we need to send this message to the legislature that we do not want to see this happen. There was another person on, I'll say that I know she has not put her name in the chat, that I also know wants to speak on this, though. Her name is Milin. I, I'm happy to defer to her at this point, if that's okay.
You're on mute, Lori.
You're on mute, Lori.
Thank you. You have a few minutes left, but if you wish to defer, that's fine.
Yes, I, I'm, I'm happy to defer to Milin. She actually has some distinct points that, that are unique to her and her husband.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
I need her full name and address.
Who, Jean's?
Jean's, yes.
I could put that in the chat for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I would request that of everyone, because again, we don't have your sign-in sheet, so that would be helpful. Milin, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would like to speak.
Okay, you can have five minutes starting now.
Yes.
Could you say your full name and address, please?
Yes, my full name is Milian Nguyen, and I'm here with my husband, Koing Nguyen, and I'm speaking on behalf of both of us because he has a voice impediment. My address, our address is two zero five eight Dennis Lane, Bethlehem, PA, one eight zero one five. I'm speaking in support of the resolution because we are independent voters. We've been independent for a long time, and it is, we think that our vote does not count if HB thirty-eight is going to be implemented. We have no voice in this whole gerrymandering strategies. And so HB thirty-eight does not recognize our vote. The second thing is, it doesn't recognize our votes where it matters. We believe that the judiciary has to be independent of the legislative branch, and we know that the appellate courts will interpret the law, and that will affect us statewide. So to see that we are then restricted to only vote for three people instead of so many others in the state, to me, it's a violation of our voting rights. And from the experience we have had with talking to the legislature, especially when bills come up, like the redistricting bill that came up the last time, that was supported by a hundred and ten or more sponsors, we called the three people that mattered the most in the legislature to get it out of committee or to try to get a vote. And when we call those, the leadership people there, basically, we were told that we were not their constituents. So when it comes to the courts, I think we cannot have that scenario. I really think it's not to the disrespectful of voters. I think that that's all that I have to say.
Thank you very much. Are there any other folks that want to speak on courtesy of the floor?
Please raise your hand in Zoom or dial star nine. I do not see any others.
Okay, thank you. County Executive Report, Mr. McClure.
Good evening, council. I wanted to take a little bit of your time tonight to reflect with you about the impact that you've had on small businesses and the people that work for them in North Hampton County throughout this pandemic. As you know, you have thrown a lifeline to eight hundred small businesses, and the folks who work at those small businesses all throughout North Hampton County. You can't go anywhere in North Hampton County where a small business hasn't been helped. And you've done it to the tune of ten point seven million dollars, and you've been, my understanding, based on some of what I'm hearing, some of the feedback from the Commonwealth, you've been one of the most successful counties in Pennsylvania in, in supporting your small business community, but I wanted to share with you some of the reflections from those small business folks. January thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. I've been trying to find the words to express how appreciative I am after receiving the grant from the North Hampton County Council. However, nothing seems sufficient. This has been a tough year for local restaurants. Here at Little Creek, we have experienced two complete shutdowns due to COVID nineteen. The first shutdown lasted five weeks. The second weeks, the second was two weeks during the holiday season. The financial struggle has made us question whether we would be able to survive. With the help from the grant from the Small Business Relief Fund, I will be able to keep my business going through the winter, which is our toughest time of the year. From the bottom of my heart, I truly cannot say thank you enough. Knowing that North Hampton County cares so much about the local businesses that contribute to the economy has shown me that even with the state of the country currently, there are still people out there that genuinely care about others. Kimberly A. Green, Little Creek Barbecue, Washington Boulevard, Bangor, PA. Dear County Executive McClure, I would like to take this opportunity to personally thank you and North Hampton County Government for the grant award we received in today's mail. The current health crisis has changed our world in many ways, but it's refreshing, it is refreshing to know that people in public service like you and the members of county council still recognize the needs of your citizenry and act decisively to make things better. Our North Hampton County Small Business Relief Fund Award will help preserve five jobs that support five families in our forty-nine-year-old business, a business which has served the needs of North Hampton County and beyond since nineteen seventy-two. I likewise commend everyone on your DCED staff who continually make businesses, large and small, aware of grant opportunities like this one, and who go the extra mile to assist in the important details of applying for aid. The Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce was equally helpful in this endeavor and is certainly deserving of our gratitude as well. In closing, may I again emphasize how appreciative we at the Nazareth Army and Navy Store are for this most generous award. It comes to us at a critical time as the pandemic rages on, and businesses like ours fight to maintain relevance and a community presence. You as county executive have led the crusade to provide critical help to a shaken business community, and for that, we are most grateful. The North Hampton County Small Business Relief Fund and your guidance of it has given businesses like our own a chance to continue to provide important products and services to those we serve. Just as importantly, five families will continue to be employed through these dark and perilous times as the open sign continues to grace the front door of the Nazareth Army and Navy Store. We have you as North Hampton County Executive, County Council, North Hampton County DCED, and the Lehigh Valley Chamber to thank for all of this, and most importantly, the opportunity to continue our business. Thank you once again. Sincerely yours, Paul A. Kokolos, co-owner, Nazareth Army-Navy Store. Mr. Lamont McClure, I am literally writing this email in tears. I opened my mail today to find a check for COVID relief via your office. This is nothing less than a godsend. Being a small business open for the last two years, we have struggled to compete with the larger regional chains. As a franchisee, I have gone weeks without paying myself simply to cover my team member payroll. Then COVID hit. Although it helped increase sales as customers responded to our clean, fresh, and friendly environment as the large chain stores ran out of product, the expense to maintain governmental compliance and keep my customers and team members alike safe has been extremely expensive and stressful. At Grocery Outlet of Easton, our mission is to bring fresh wholesome foods at, at extreme pricing to support our local community. We continuously donate to Project of Easton and other local churches and food banks as it is our responsibility to help stamp out hunger in the communities we serve. Born and raised in Bethlehem and formerly an employee of Langco supermarkets, I love our community, and this is why I opened this franchise in Easton when the site became available. From the bottom of my heart, thank you to you and your fellow county council members for considering my team and I during this time. We have stood shoulder to shoulder throughout this pandemic and have stayed open throughout these dark days. We will apply this money to past due invoices, and I will offer a small bonus to each of my nineteen team members. God bless you, and thank you so very much. H. Joshua Bartholomew III, owner-operator Sandy Lakes Wholesome Marks, Inc., Grocery Outlet of Easton. Never think what you do, council, doesn't matter. It does. Our pension board met this week, and or I should say last week, and we had some good news. We currently have four hundred ninety-one million eighteen thousand, eighteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars in our pension fund. This is a very, it's nearly a half a billion-dollar pension fund. In our OPEB fund, that is the fund with respect to our post-retiree employment benefits, the health benefits, there's over fifty million dollars. Council, public financial management is doing a tremendous job, and because we're over a half a billion dollars in assets, we were able to grant a cost of living adjustment for all of our retirees. The retirement board unanimously, unanimously approved a point four percent cost of living adjustment. The reason it was point four is because that's the highest the law would allow us to grant. But with the overall general health of our excellent pension fund, it was a very easy decision for the pension board to make. So I wanted to give you that update. Your pension fund today is in very good shape. I will, as a side note, our our representative from PFM who comes to our meetings is Mr. John Spagnola, who is a former Philadelphia Eagle. He's from Bethlehem. And I think he comes on our account because his mom's still here, so he comes up to see his mom, but be that as it may, he, he got a little testy last week because I reminded him once again, although they're doing very well, they shouldn't lose our money, and he said, you know, Mr. McClure, you say that to me at every meeting. And I said, you know, John, I'm going to keep saying that. They're doing a great job, but we need to be vigilant, and your retirement board is. So thank you for that. Let's see, what else do we have? I was contacted by Governor Wolf's office probably closer to late last year with a question. Is there anybody in your community who you think should be appointed by the governor to the Law Enforcement Advisory Commission? And I looked around, and I found Mr. Marvin Boyer. Mr. Marvin Boyer is a member of the Executive Board of the NAACP. He had a long and distinguished career in the private sector, business, and he, he is a very active member of our community now and serves North Hampton County in several capacities, including being appointee of the Law Enforcement Advisory Commission, and he wrote to me today to tell me that he's going to be starting his term as a commission member, and he's going to do forty basic hours of training in use of force, stop, search, and arrest, traffic enforcement, bias-based policing, internal affairs processes, and constitutional law. So Mr. Boyer is now in Harrisburg, working beyond the borders of our county. He's now working for the entire Commonwealth, and we can't thank him enough for that. And with that, my report is concluded.
Thank you, Mr. McClure.
You're welcome.
Any questions for Mr. McClure? Mr. Myers?
Not a question or comment. Your choice of Marvin Boyer will be a huge asset to our community and to the state. His involvement with criminal justice is beyond reproach. I thought that's an excellent pick, and I didn't even know he was up for it. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Seeing no one else. We'll move on to old business. Thank you again, Mr. McClure.
Thank you.
Old business, is there any other old business to discuss? Seeing none, we'll move into new business. First, we have the introduction of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Twenty Twenty-One North Hampton County Budget, Community Development Grants. I need someone to sponsor the ordinance.
Sponsor.
I couldn't see who said that.
Tara.
And someone to second.
Oh, I'll second.
I'll be, I'll be a second.
Who was that?
Carrie Mars.
Carrie, thank you. Okay, public hearing, debate, and possible vote will be held at the February eighteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. Thank you. Consideration of the Twenty Twenty-One Priorities of the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania, Mr. Kusick, will you introduce the resolution?
President, a resolution of the County of North Hampton, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, supporting the Twenty Twenty-One priorities of the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania. Whereas Pennsylvania counties have selected five priority issues that will be the focal point of county's proactive agenda for twenty twenty-one, and whereas these priorities showcase county's commitment to the core services they provide to the people and communities of Pennsylvania, and whereas achieving these five county priorities underscore the critical need to redefine, reinvigorate, and emphasize the state-county partnership in service delivery, and whereas the top priority for Pennsylvania counties in twenty twenty-one is election reforms with a particular focus on precanvassing and mail-in ballot deadlines, and whereas in the twenty twenty general election, North Hampton County received more than fifty thousand absentee and mail-in ballots, and whereas election officials in some counties were unable to begin processing these ballots until the morning of Election Day, delaying these results and causing confusion despite county's best efforts to complete this work while also managing a safe, secure, and in-person election. Whereas allowing counties to precanvass mail-in ballots and moving back the mail-in ballot deadline to fifteen days prior to Election Day are essential to be able to provide timely results as the public expects. And whereas North Hampton County takes its responsibility seriously to assure the integrity and security of the election process and must be at the table with the General Assembly Administration to develop solutions statutory clarifications that can be implemented clearly and consistently to assure appropriate resources are available for counties to implement any policy changes, and whereas county's second priority is broadband expansion, addressing the immediate need for infrastructure that is critical to economic vitality, the personal, personal quality of life. And whereas in North Hampton County, approximately twenty percent of our residents do not have reliable internet services and other key parts of their everyday lives. Whereas emergency medical services, crisis solutions is county's third priority to address current system funding needs and to identify potential areas for county involvement and assistance, including retention and recruitment, reimbursement rates, funding, coverage, service models, risk reduction, technology support, and training requirements. And whereas there is a critical need to address the decline of emergency services in communities and build off the work done in the two thousand four SR sixty and two thousand eighteen SR six reports to improve overall emergency service delivery, and whereas counties have chosen protecting funding for county human services as their fourth priority, addressing the daily challenge of serving the ever-growing needs of our residents amid increasing mandates and steadily declining state and federal funding. And whereas, for example, North Hampton County serves thousands of people through more than ten programs, including drug and alcohol services, mental health services, child welfare, veterans affairs, and other human services programs. And whereas the state-county partnership in service delivery must again be prioritized, including a commitment to additional and sustainable funding for all human services programs. Whereas increased funding for mental health services that correspond with the growing need is county's final priority. Whereas North Hampton County has invested in community-based mental health services that coordinate and invest in programs and services that meet the needs and challenges of local communities. And whereas a key objective under this priority is the preservation of the successful Behavioral Health Choices Program, which has allowed each county the flexibility to deliver mental health and drug and alcohol services to individuals enrolled in Medicaid that meets local needs and challenges. And whereas counties will need collaboration between the legislature and administration to work closely with them on targeted strategic investments of dollars into community mental health services at the county level in order to continue the existing safety net and bolster the availability of mental health services to those who need them as vital steps in the right direction. Now, it is therefore resolved that North Hampton County stands ready to work with CCAP and counties throughout the Commonwealth in support of these priorities for twenty twenty-one. It is further resolved that these priorities emphasize the important role North Hampton County plays in improving our communities and the well-being of our residents. It is further resolved that North Hampton County calls upon the General Assembly and the administration to work together in partnership with counties to jointly determine the most effective ways to continue meeting the needs of Pennsylvania. It is therefore, it is further resolved that collaboration between county government and the Commonwealth on these priorities will lead to solutions that improve stewardship of taxpayer dollars, reduce costs, increase local flexibility, and assure the quality of services counties provide. It is further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to the North Hampton County Legislative Delegation, to Governor Wolf, and to CCAP. And if I could just editorialize and just wanted to let folks know that also on the Zoom call is CCAP Executive Director Lisa Schaefer, and I would ask her to, if she wanted to chime in and address some of these things, some of you had asked about the election issue. I think, you know, for, for us in particularly, I think our staff did an outstanding job of counting the absentee and mail-in ballots. You know, unfortunately, many other counties did not have the same sense of urgency or the alacrity when it came to counting mail-in ballots, and I think that, that failure on the part of some counties to move quickly, and maybe some of them couldn't, were what led to some of the false narratives surrounding the twenty twenty election. So at this point, I'd ask if we could turn it over to Lisa, and if she could add anything, I'd, I'd hope that we could welcome her comments.
Absolutely. Lisa, are you available?
I am. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for joining us tonight.
Thank you for, for your interest in the, the county priorities for this year. As, as you know, they were chosen and selected by all of our counties across the Commonwealth at our fall across the Commonwealth at our Fall Conference last year. And obviously, given the challenges that we saw with the 2020 elections, election reforms clearly became the top priority. And I would certainly agree with Councilmember Cusick that all of our counties across the Commonwealth did an excellent job administering the election in a fair, safe, and accurate way. It was our first time, of course, administering mail-in ballots for all voters. We've had absentees for quite some time, but this is the first experience that every voter in Pennsylvania had to take advantage of those. And we knew they were going to be popular, but we didn't really know how popular, especially given the pandemic and everything else that happened last year. So it really became a challenge with the tens of thousands of ballots that our county saw, to be able to process those in one day on Election Day, basically running two elections at the same time, a mail-in election and an in-person election. And we had warned that, you know, that would likely mean that counties wouldn't be able to provide timely results, depending on their resources and how well they were able to process those ballots, opening two sets of envelopes, getting them flattened, getting them through the scanners, and everything else. And unfortunately, that came to bear. And we saw the confusion that resulted as counties continued to count legitimately cast ballots after Election Night. So for that reason, counties are renewing their call for some expanded precanvass periods. So again, not releasing results before the polls would close, but giving counties time to just take care of those administrative tasks prior to Election Day, so that when Election Day comes, you can focus on the in-person election, and we can have as complete results as possible then on Election Night as the public has come to expect. The other piece, main piece of the priority too, calls for an extended deadline for mail-in and absentee ballots. I think we all saw with the mail process being what it was, that anyone who waited until seven days before the election to apply for a mail-in ballot, which is the current deadline, there was really very little chance that the county could get the ballot, the application process, get the ballot to the voter, and the voter could put it back in the mail and get it back to the county in a timely fashion, which we saw, you know, voters weren't sure, you know, they were trying to drop them off. They would just come to the polls anyway and have to either spoil their ballot or vote provisional, which really undermined the whole point of having mail-in ballots to start with. So, you know, we think that moving that deadline back to 15 days would bring that convenience back and really help to enfranchise our voters who want to choose that option. So obviously, a number of other things we learned about mail-in ballots over the last year that we're hoping to work on and gain some clarity in the law for our counties. But that is definitely the top issue that we'll be focusing on at this time. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer those or touch on any of the other priorities you might wish.
Mr. Heckman?
Yeah, hi. This is Ron Heckman.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, as to what Mr. Cusick said and you reiterated, especially when we talk about the elections and how that impacted counties in our state. I mean, the concept of mail-in voting in and of itself isn't really new. Western states have been doing it for years. But obviously, this election, there's been a lot of things which made it more of a topic of discussion, especially with how quickly it was implemented. And I think those of us at the county were a little bit concerned when we knew it was going to be in a presidential election year, and we also had to buy new computer, new voting machines the year before. But having said that, in John's presentation, I guess my question would be this. Pennsylvania has, is, and will continue to be, no doubt, a state that'll be under a federal microscope, national microscope in elections. We're just going to be one of those states. And so obviously, whoever wins or loses is going to point at Pennsylvania and look for any wrinkle or perceived wrinkle they can find. Some counties handled it better than others, both the machine purchasing and acquiring machines and also the mailing. Are you taking, is CCAP, and John brought this up, but I'm just curious, is there a concerted effort to look into where the real big problems may have occurred within certain counties in the state? And really try and help them be able to avoid this or avoid some of these issues in the future? Because I doubt if mail-in ballots are going anywhere. I think they are popular. I think they're going to become more popular. And we're going to continue to be a state that people will look at and judge fairly or unfairly. So I just wondered, I saw that it's a priority, but is CCAP making a concerted effort to work with some of these counties that may have had problems to try and see what they can do themselves?
So there are, first of all, a number of individual counties that are doing that deep dive into their own practices to look at ways that they can improve them, certainly. As you may know, CCAP has a number of policy committees made up of our members. One of those, our Election Reform Committee. And immediately after the November election, we got that group together and began taking a dive into county practices and where those areas in the law were that helped to cause some of the confusion. Because part of the reason that we saw so many questions and so much anxiety was that the law was a little gray, shall we say, in some areas, and made it challenging to interpret in a consistent fashion. And that committee worked, and in early January, just before we released these priorities, actually released its preliminary report and recommendations on things that could be addressed to improve processes for all counties. So not diving into investigating any individual county, but looking at all the different places in the law and different administrative issues, different resource issues that could be addressed to help all of our counties administer elections more effectively in the future.
Thank you, Lisa.
Mr. Myers?
Yes, I have a question and also have a concern with this resolution. Whereas when we're looking at the, you know, the mail-in ballots of 15 days prior, where did that number come from? And why is it that we have that number? Because I kind of feel like it disenfranchises people of minority community.
So when we had the conversations with our Election Reform Committee, the 15-day number was chosen because it is consistent with the voter registration deadline that we have here in Pennsylvania. So the idea was that, you know, anyone who wants to vote is going to have to register by 15 days out. So in order to keep those two things similar, it made sense to us to keep the 15-day application deadline the same as well.
So we're saying we changed it because we wanted to make it more in line with what the deadline was? Is that what you're saying to me?
That we wanted to offer more time to, again, give, once somebody applies for a ballot, to get that ballot processed and able to have enough time to get back and forth in the mail to the voter and back to the county. And then looking at those timeframes, 15 days again being consistent with the voter registration deadline seemed less of an arbitrary number to go with there.
But do you feel that my opinion that disenfranchising those folks of the minority community are going to be hurt by this? Does that anyway sway why we should go in this direction? Because that's one objection I have very strongly about.
And we know that certainly there are, you know, individuals who would like to have more time. And the counties that had this conversation thought that we actually have a stronger means of enfranchising those voters because we can enable them to get it back and forth in the mail. They don't have to worry about whether their ballot's going to get there on time. They don't have to worry about whether they have to try to go to the polls to find a place to spoil their ballot, to vote provisionally, you know, get down to the county office to drop off their ballot if they don't think it can get back in the mail. It just, we think that that gives more time for the process to work as it was intended to do, and therefore helps people to get their votes in and get them timely voted.
Well, why wasn't the Dropbox putting part of this resolution that we have here? Because we did use a Dropbox.
Dropboxes were not included in the priority itself as a specific recommendation. The policy committee did not come to a consensus on that, but did indicate in its report that that is an issue that needs clarity in the law so that all counties can feel comfortable with how they might implement those going forward. I think that was a question regarding the law that a number of counties did have.
It's also a sticking point for the GOP where they try to disallow dropboxes. I think in order for us to do that, CCAP's going to do something. We need to understand that the convenience of those who cannot get to the polls, if they can get that to the Dropbox, ought to be included in this conversation.
And I think that is absolutely a conversation that we're going to continue to have, and I know that the General Assembly will as well going forward.
That's all I have, Madam President. You?
Can't hear you. You're on mute.
Ms. Zierinski?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate you allowing me to speak. I want to know, in these legislative priorities, if we have to accept them as is or can we amend them? Because I am in agreement with Mr. Myers that we don't necessarily have to move the deadline, but we could be in agreement with a precanvass. And I also think that the dropboxes should be a priority. I understand that that's not the priority that CCAP would move forward, but in terms of what this council would support, I'm wondering if we can amend any one of these in our own way to say, this is what we agree with as a county. Because basically, what we're doing if we vote on this entire resolution would be to say that we agree with these priorities, and we also support CCAP moving them forward. So my question is, can we amend any one of the priorities and still pass this resolution?
Are you directing that to Lisa or?
I'm directing that to Lisa or our solicitor, or even Mr. Cusick might want to respond to that. Maybe this is his resolution.
Well, you know, as our solicitor is fond of saying, counsel can make a motion and second to amend any resolution. But then the question becomes one of consistency. What CCAP wants to do is have a consistent message that we can, and our lobbying arm can approach the legislature with. And what would happen, should we amend this, is that our legislators here in Northampton County would be getting a different message than other ones across the state.
They would be getting our message.
That is correct if a majority did do that. However, it would be inconsistent with CCAP. Now, my suggestion would be, if there are other suggestions that this council would have, I think that another course of action might be to do separate resolutions. But I think my concern is that if we would amend this resolution, that we would ultimately be sending mixed messages to our legislative delegation with regards to specifically what CCAP's priorities are.
Yeah, my concern is that they won't receive our understanding of how, of what we agree with as a county, if that were amended, right? And we had that discussion, that they would accept that whatever CCAP is doing is what we do or what we're recommending. So my concern again is with moving the deadline back 15 days. I really do believe that disenfranchises voters. And I do believe that the dropboxes were very important in this election. I think anybody should be able to vote up into the day of, on Election Day. If that's by mail-in vote, then that's fine. I am all for the precanvass, though.
Mr. Myers?
I see Mrs. Zierinski seems to be on the same plane I'm thinking of that standpoint. I can't agree with CCAP if they can't understand where the disenfranchiser not being taken care of. If we can't amend this resolution to the point because we want to be consistent with the legislation, I'm in favor of what we want to do, because we're the ones who are putting our name out there by the county. If I'm wrong, someone please tell me I'm wrong. But I just feel that's awfully important. It's awfully important to those that are being disenfranchised.
Yeah.
Anyone else have a comment or question?
I just want to.
Mr. Heckman? Wait, Mr. Heckman? Mr. Heckman, you're on mute.
Okay.
You're still on mute.
I think there is an outside force trying to keep me silent. All right, it's definitely unmuted. I mean, I looked through, and I don't always, I always agree with CCAP. I mean, because I understand that CCAP is like a federal system, and a lot of counties look at things differently than maybe I do or anything county does. But I mean, said that, I guess if there's a strong sense of this one issue with the voting that creates a problem, I don't know how Mr. Cusick feels, but I believe you could amend the resolution as a whole and take out that section and vote for the other four, unless there's problems with that. That's just a thought I have, and that's up to the will of council. But I just wanted to throw that out there. I'm done.
Mr. Lot?
Yeah, I would actually like to hear from Ms. Cozy on this. You know, my thought was there was such a problem with having that deadline so close, logistically getting the paperwork out to the voter, getting the voter to return it. And there was a lot of opportunity for that person not to be able to vote and because the mail didn't get their paper back. So my thought was that 15 days was just really trying to make it logistically, you know, more feasible for our election office. So if I'm misunderstanding something here, I would like to hear a little bit more about that. But my understanding was this was to help our election office to process the mail-in ballots, get them out to the people, give them enough time to get them back. You know, so I thought that made sense. Thank you.
I did ask Ms. Cozy to be here tonight. I don't see her on, but I did wanted to check in.
She has joined the call.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. If you have specific questions about the administration side and how these reforms affect it, I'd be happy to answer. I do, for the record, support all of the reforms that CCAP has put forth. And probably the most important one to the functioning of our office is moving that deadline back to the voter registration deadline. I do not feel that it disenfranchises voters. In fact, I think it does the opposite, actually. It ensures that voters will get their ballot in time to complete it and return it by the deadline. A lot of people that had to vote provisionally on Election Day had to do so because their ballot did not arrive or they were worried that their ballot was not going to arrive back to us in time. Giving that deadline of a week before the election makes people think that, oh, I have until this day to request my ballot, thinking that it's just a given that you're going to be able to get it, vote it, and return it. And it's just not logistically the case. It's also a nightmare for us administrally to get our poll books completed and uploaded with the most accurate information, because we need to know every single voter that has applied for a mail-in ballot to make sure that everything is fair and legal and accurate. So in fact, I would, if I had to pick precanvass or moving the deadline, I would pick moving the deadline.
Thank you.
Ms. Zierinski?
I would like to direct this question to Amy Cozy. Do you think that moving the deadline back 15 days or with a precanvass or moving, not moving the deadline back 15 days with a precanvass would help or not help to enfranchise voters? Because I thought, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, that it was the fact that it was postmarked, and then you were still counting them days after the election. That was the issue. So is it the postmark or is it the deadline of when they have to get them in? That was the real problem.
The canvassing as a whole is going to be the same amount of work for my staff, whether it happens three days before the election or three days following the election. It's the same amount of work. So on our behalf, it does not, it doesn't really benefit our office. We are doing the same amount of work, whether we start three days ahead of time or not. And don't get me wrong, I wish that we could so that we could have results sooner to the public. That's obviously the goal. We know that the public wants those results as quickly as possible. But as far as the work on our end, that was. But as far as the work on our end, that remains the same, no matter when we start doing that canvas.
Well, regardless of the work, though, does it help voters to be able to vote? Because the, I think the, the idea is that we want to have fair and free elections, but we want to make sure that people have the ability to vote, not just that your office has, you know, we want your office to have everything they need to do their job, but we want, the priority is voting in itself. I mean, you have to do that job and you have to get those votes counted. And we do understand that and we do understand that that's a task. If that is, if the issue is having more resources to do that efficiently and increase the assurances that the vote will be fair and free and that people will be enfranchised, I think that should be the priority. I mean, I can appreciate that.
Well, creating more work for us the week before the election is not, is not necessarily going to be the best solution. If we have more resources, that's great. But without that guarantee, it's not going to impact the franchisement of voters in any way, whether or not we can pre-canvas those ballots. They're going to have, their, their rights are not affected in any way determinant when we start canvassing those ballots. It doesn't disenfranchise or franchise voters one way or another. It gets you results quicker is what it does.
Right. But if someone had those 15 days to get their mail-in ballot in, would that not be better for the voter? Like just thinking.
Yeah, absolutely.
So if that's better for the voter, then I say that we vote for the voter to be enfranchised and we vote for the voter to have the most opportunity to vote. And then we deal with whether or not you need more staff or you need more resources, because our priority has to be that the voters get to vote. Do you see what I'm saying?
I agree. I, that's why I think moving that deadline, if anything, enfranchises voters because it ensures them that they have more time to complete the voting process. If there is an issue in the voting process, they have more time to alert us of it and we have more time to fix the problem. If they alert us the day before the election that they never got their ballot, there's very little that we can do to help them. But if they alert us a week ahead of time, they have options. So moving that deadline gives voters the options to complete the voting process in a more efficient way.
Lisa, are you still with us?
I am.
Can you comment on that? I see my, I see folks up, but I just want to get your input at this point after you've heard what Amy had to say.
Yes, thank you. And quite frankly, I think Amy put it even better than, than I could have put it. Really summarized, again, the consensus that was arrived to by, by members of, of our policy committee, our counties and the vote that was taken by our counties for the priority and trying to make sure that there is enough time for voters to be able to cast that mail-in ballot the way that they like to. I will also add too, that we have talked about making sure that that emergency ballot provision, so the ability to apply for an emergency ballot, should the need arise, you know, somebody has an issue that could not have been anticipated 15 days out, that we would expand the provision that is currently existing in law to, to accommodate that so that we, we make sure that, that those who truly do need some accommodations to get a mail-in ballot are still able to do so.
Mr. Heckman, you had your hand up, followed by Mr. Myers. You're.
Ryan, you. Thank you. Yes. You know, it was interesting. I really didn't have a problem with this until Mr. Myers brought up some, some, you know, very important points. And, and I, and I have to respect that. And I guess the, what I'm hearing, and this is an issue and concern for me, is that it, it's, it's sort of that old question of the perfect being the enemy of the good or the good being the enemy of perfect. And listening to Ms. Cozy particularly, I mean, we did a really good job here in Northampton County and we've, we've certainly said that many times. But she's saying something that I've found over my life and, and when you're trying to manage or run certain things, is that sometimes all the, it's, it's very hard to, to accomplish 100% of what would be the best thing to do and still make it work. Her, her comments about being able to, to get the operation, I mean, this is a big operation and it was thrown in very quickly. We, we've all mentioned that. We were thrown in the deep end of a pool and said, and told, good luck. And so, I mean, I thought, given that the election went well, and you heard me speak before about my concerns about Pennsylvania being looked at as somehow we, we didn't do things right. I, I want to see everybody have the ability to vote and I think a lot of that has to do with outreach and going into the election and making sure that commu, all communities, communities, particularly generally disenfranchised communities are aware of the processes. However, my concern is, based on what I'm hearing from Ms. Cozy specifically, is that in many ways, it's almost impossible to assure that and still run a functioning election that won't be open to criticism by somebody when, when we're finished. And, and maybe I'm not, you know, processing this as well as I should. So, I mean, I'm, I'm in a bit of a bind on that because I do respect what Mr. Myers is saying. He's brought a lot of insight to us that, that we haven't had presented at times. And I appreciate that. And he's done it on numerous occasions. Yet at the same time, I'm hearing that it may not be possible to effectively incorporate all of that into our office. And I, I apologize if I got it, if I haven't gotten that correct. But Amy, is, could you address that? Am I somewhere near where, what you're saying or addressing?
Yeah, exactly. So the, the concept of having the deadline for a mail-in ballot a week before the election, I understand we want to give people as much time as possible to request their ballot and, and that's completely valid. But on the administration side, if we can't effectively administer a turnaround time given that timeline, then it's counterproductive. So when we have such a limited amount of time to complete so many things, things are much more likely to slip through the cracks and, and to become larger problems. But by extending it that extra week, which by the way, is still much more time than we have ever had to apply for an absentee ballot in Pennsylvania. It's, it still gives voters so much more opportunity than they ever have before in this state to, to vote in that way. It also gives the administration side of things, time to do things properly, correctly and accurately. And I think that those things are just as important as the amount of that extra week for voters to apply for the ballot. I think you have to, you have to weigh the pros and cons of both. Obviously, I'm on the administration side and I see the, the headaches and the nightmares that it causes my office. So I'm a little bit biased in that sense. But I also was on the phone with hundreds of voters who had issues leading up to the election because they applied at the last minute and we couldn't help them. And that is also heartbreaking. So if we give voters a larger window for us to correct any issues or mistakes, I think both sides win. And I think that the, the validity of the election is stronger.
I can't, we can't hear you, Lori. You're on mute. Mr. Myers.
I sympathize with Ms. Cozy and the work that's put on her, but it's also our job as the source of the county to make sure she has everything she needs to get her job done. My issue with this is the mail, first, first thing, the mail, the drop box things is not part of this conversation at all. We're talking about time, 15 days, seven days, whatever. I, I would prefer that we cut that 15 to seven, if we had to do something like that, because I also need to understand that we need to get the explanation that any emergency ballot can be get to somebody. Because if someone, and I, I've had a person who just went through it. Unfortunately, a couple of days before had a health issue and the very first thing they wanted to do was, when they got to the hospital was get me so I could get to the place and vote. I mean, when I hear somebody doing something like that, I know how important it is to people like myself, who, if you think about it, 40 years ago, we didn't even had it, or I can go back 60 years and say, we weren't even allowed to vote. Now that we're allowed to vote, I want every person to get that chance to do that. As long as everybody understands where I'm coming from with this. And maybe it's years of wisdom, but I think it's awfully important. I don't, I want to pre-canvas. I am all for doing as much pre-canvas as we can. I think it's awfully important. But in the same breath, I don't want to disenfranchise anybody, no matter who they are with voting. So if, if we can maybe change that from 15 days to seven days, if that's easier, I'll go for that. But I can't actually vote for this with 15 days, nothing mentioned about the drop boxes. And I, I feel like I'm disenfranchising people.
I feel the need to jump in. Mr. Zierinski, I see you. I will call on you next. I understand. I, I think that you're reading this wrong. My understanding is the way I'm hearing you is reading that wrong, that allowing them 15 days gives them more time to vote and more time to pre-canvas. I don't think it's a cutoff. Am I wrong? It's a cutoff of 15 days?
The way that I'm reading it is, and the way that Ms. Cozy explained it, was the deadline to register. That's not what this sentence says. This sentence says, whereas allowing counties to pre-canvas mail-in ballots and moving back the mail-in deadline to 15 days prior to election. To me, that means that someone has to get their ballot in 15 days before. And that's why I would like to make a motion to strike that portion where it says, and moving back the mail-in deadline to 15 days prior to election day. I'd like to make a motion to strike that.
If I may, this is.
Yes, yes, Lisa.
And I know that Councilor Cusick used the draft resolution that C cap had put together. I will go back and, and check our draft. That, if that is the way it reads, that is a typo on our part. That should have been the, the application deadline, not the actual deadline for returning your ballot, which is a critical.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big thing.
That's a huge thing.
So if you, if you move the application back, I can agree with that, but I still want your ballot to be able to be handed in on election day. And that's not what that language says. And I think that that's what we need the clarity of. So if you have to go back and make sure that that's the language of C cap, then please do that. Because as it stands, I would make a motion to strike that. Or I don't know if we should table this till you get the correct language.
And I will, I will definitely confirm that the position of C cap is to move the application deadline back to 15 days, not the date to submit a ballot, which would still be on election day as it is now under our position. I both.
That's what I thought from the website.
Then we make a motion.
Wait, 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 let her finish. Let her finish. Lisa, go ahead.
I said, I, I believe it is, it is an unfortunate missing word in the resolution that, that could simply be, and I'm pulling up our sample here just to verify. Given, if you can just give me one moment.
But that's a simple solution because.
Wait, let her finish. Let her finish.
Okay.
Plus, I see Mr. Lot needed, there's a couple of people want to speak, but while she's looking it up, Mr. Lot, do you want to speak while she's reviewing this?
Well, yes, that is my understanding. I mean, and now I'm understanding some of the confusion here because this is, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, this is, you need to, the election office needs to receive your request for a mail-in ballot right now, seven days ahead. That is the deadline they created. What they found was that deadline is brutal because the mail's got to go out, the person's got to get it, and then it's got to get back in. It's disenfranchising more. You heard Ms. Cozy. That was where all the problems were. So all they're doing is, my understanding, all they're doing is saying seven days is not a good, workable deadline to be logistically get this done. Let's do 14. I don't understand how a deadline, moving a deadline out saying, hey, I want to, I want a mail-in ballot, moving that deadline out for that request, I don't see how it disenfranchises voters. I, I would think if, if I sent in seven days and, and like Ms. Cozy explained to us, I don't get any back. Now I've been disenfranchised. And that's what happened in this last election. I mean, so I think this, this 15 days makes a lot of sense. It's a deadline. It's a workable deadline. And, and I think we really need to counter ballots, mail-in ballots ahead of time so we don't have some of the situations where somebody looks like they're way ahead because nobody counted ballots. I think it just serve our public better that we can have a, a result within the next day. I think it's very important to pre-canvas. But my understanding, it's a deadline. And what they're doing is adjusting a deadline so they can be more, more user-friendly, that we don't lose people in, in the process. Thank you.
Ms. Cozy and then Mr. McGee. Hello, did you hear me?
I did.
Uh, Amy can't unmute.
She can't unmute. Aileen has to unmute her. She got a chat.
Uh, yeah, I just want to echo what Kevin said. That's exactly the thing. It's the application deadline. They can, they still have until 8:00 PM on election day to get that ballot back. That, that's, that remains untouched. It's just the deadline to request a ballot gets moved back one week. Like I mentioned earlier, that is still much, much sooner than we have ever been able to do that in Pennsylvania. But you still have until 8:00 PM on election day or maybe past that, depending on what the court ruling is at the time. But yeah, it doesn't, it does not affect your return date of your ballot whatsoever.
Very good. Very good.
Mr. McGee.
These requests, they're, they're online. People go online to request their ballots. And then they get the ballot mailed to them. So the date that we're talking about that they're moving, is, is that the date that the stamp for the, so you got the guy, you got the person going online, requesting the ballot, then the ballot gets generated from the county and mailed to that person. Just for a timeline for simplicity, not to drag this out, but where, where does that date come into play? Does that date come into play on the postmark, on the ballot going into the county? Or you said it was to, that, to request the ballot, to request the ballot?
Yes. So any application that we receive by 5:00 PM on the designated deadline will be processed and then a ballot will be sent.
Okay, so let's back that up. Let's back that up. So that's the, that's the day that you either mail it in or you, that you said received. So if you mail it, you got to figure a couple of days to receive it then. Is that correct? Or you look at the state, the damp, the state, the date stamp? And, and if it comes in three days later, as long as it was postmarked before.
No, no, we, not on applications. We do not go by postmarks. We have to receive it. We have to have it in hand by 5:00 PM on the deadline to process the application.
Okay. So you have to almost have to, if you want to comply with that date, and I understand the administrative reasoning for this, because, and Kevin Lot gave a good, good example of, you know, the, the person that gets disenfranchised is somebody that their, their ballot never got counted because they tried to do everything, but there just wasn't enough time. I understand it. All I'm saying is though, we have to, we have to make sure that the voters know that they, they have to back everything up a little bit because it has to be received. You have to get it to receive it. Now you can go to the county and do one in person, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. That's all. Thank you.
So Lisa, did you check that? Are we clear?
Yes, I double-checked our resolution and I did discover that it is in fact an error on our part. So I will apologize for the mis-drafting of your resolution that was based on our draft. That whereas clause should to be consistent with C cap's priority read. Whereas allowing counties to pre-canvas mail-in ballots. Whereas allowing counties to pre-camus mail-in ballots and moving back the mail-in ballot application deadline to fifteen days prior to Election Day are essential to be able to provide timely results as the public expects.
So can we have a motion, or can I make a motion to amend that?
You can. We could add two suggestions. One is to do that at this time to make that amendment. The other is if we want to double-check the entire document before we go forward and to postpone the vote on this for two weeks. So that's your choices.
I, I read the entire document and that's the only word that I saw that was, um, wrong. But it could serve us well to go over this with a fine tooth comb and to make sure that all the verbiage that, um, was intended in their draft for, of the C cap. Because if you've made one Scribner's error or another error, you might make more. So I would make a motion to table it.
Is there a second? Who's saying yes?
Myers.
Mr. Myers, there's been a motion to table and a second?
Yes.
Um, where's my Spino? Do we take a vote at this time, correct? Where's my Tony Spinone?
I have to take a vote.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Before we.
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
No.
And Mrs. Ferraro?
No.
The motion passes by a vote of seven to two.
So that's that. Hopefully we can review that further.
Yeah.
Move on in the future. Lisa, thank you for your presence tonight and thank you for checking that for us.
Thank you.
And Amy, as well to you for coming and, um, clarifying what our county needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me. And again, my apologies for, for the drafting error on our part that led to this, this confusion tonight.
I appreciate it. Um, okay, moving on. Next business, consideration of the Pennsylvania Act 106 Compliance Resolution, Appointment of a Risk Manager Form and Content. Um, I will introduce the resolution. Therefore, it is hereby resolved that the county shall hereby adopt the following procedure for compliance with the provisions of Act 106. One, County Council is designating the Director of the Department of Administration or his or her designee to serve as risk manager for purposes of this act. Two, the Director of Administration or his or her designee is hereby designated to compile and submit information to the County Council prior to the close of every calendar year as to the amount of security that the risk manager recommends that the county maintain during the succeeding year and otherwise to provide the information as set forth below to enable County Council to place into force the bond and insurance required by the act for the succeeding year. Three, in the course of performing the duties assigned under above, the Department of Administration and the Solicitor shall confer to determine the form and content of the bond and insurance would comply with the provisions of the act. Four, at least two weeks prior to the close of every calendar year, the Department of Administration shall present to County Council for its considerations and approval, the form and amount of the required security, together with their recommendation as to the bond or policy satisfying the criteria set forth in the act. Discussion. Okay, then we'll call for the vote.
Ms. Fargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
You. Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Resolution adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Um, form and content. Let's see, same thing. Therefore, it is hereby resolved that the county shall hereby accept the following level of security. Is that it?
Yes.
To cover public officials, including members of County Council and the County Executive. One, crime coverage through the county's insurance policy with PCOR, which covers all county officials and employees for fraud, embezzlement, theft, forgery, and other criminal acts up to $1 million per occurrence. Two, a wire transfer bond in the amount of $4 million, which provides an additional security above the maximum of 1 million crime coverage under PCOR for certain county employees authorized to initiate wire transfers. Three, a treasurer's bond in the amount of $72,000, which is coverage required by the state based on revenue collection levels and is still required since Act 106 does not apply to the county treasurers acting as local tax collectors, as provided in Section Four of the Local Tax Collection Law. Four, a magisterial district justice bond in the amount of $55,000 per magisterial district justice, since Act 106 does not apply to those officials. Discussion. Call the roll.
Ms. Fargo Heffner?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yeah.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay, um, consideration of the codification of ordinances for the period ending December 31st, 2020 resolution. Mr. Giovanni, could you introduce this?
All right. Where it says, um, this, uh, Northampton County Charter, Section 606?
Yes.
Requires the Northampton County Council to provide, by resolution, a codification of all ordinance as amended, having the force and effect of the law and of the charter as amended. Now therefore, be it resolved by County Council that the attached codification for the period ending December 31st, 2020 shall be adopted this fourth day of February, 2021.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Mr. Heckman?
Yeah, I, I have a request. Uh, what accompanied this, and I like to keep these, this is pretty standard, I get it. And I'm not opposed to, this is what we do. But I mean, it was like a sixty-page, uh, list of all of the, of all of the things that were codified and, and the changes. And, uh, I think when something like that happens, as long as we're virtual, I really would appreciate it if they could send us hard copies of it, because I wasn't about to print out seventy pages of codifications here at home. So I think when, when we get something like that, not, not all of us like reading on our smart tablets. Uh, I, I think it would be very helpful to have that sent out if something surpasses twenty-five, thirty pages. Could we please get a hard copy of that sent to our homes?
Yes, sir. We'll get right on that.
I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll second that.
I'm having a new appreciation for paper, Mr. Heckman. I, I feel your former pain.
This, did this for a while.
Um, can we call for the vote if there's no further discussion other than delivery of packets?
Bigger, big packet.
Yeah.
And, you know, perhaps people who want that can make a request.
I request.
I go, thank you.
Requesting for anything that's big.
Digitally? Can they send it digitally?
Yeah, he doesn't want to look at it on his computer.
Oh, 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 oh. To get it, it would be nice to get it digitally.
It was.
Okay.
Yeah, Bill, I, my, my, my printer is shared with my wife. And I mean, it's, it's all printer. I mean, we used to get things delivered to us at one time that Peg remembers. I've been told that.
Can I ask when it was sent?
Uh, yeah, I'm just asking if it's a large document.
It was actually sent out on Wednesday because of the snow days. We weren't here Monday and Tuesday. Otherwise, it would have been sent out on Monday.
Okay, great.
But it was sent digitally. I, I think my, I don't want to lose my point. My point is, could we please get hard copies of large documents? That's all.
Well, it will be mailed to you, so it would be tend on when you would get the mail.
Right.
How about we just vote on the ordinance and I'll take care of the logistics?
I, I agree. I just wanted to point that out. I don't expect it to get to me on time sometimes, as long as we're virtual. It's just the problem. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Can we call for the vote?
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Heffner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Stop by vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of a donation to Northampton County Emergency Management Resolution. Mr. Myers?
Really? I'm glad I went and picked the papers up. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Northampton County Council that it does hereby authorize Northampton County Executive to accept on behalf of Northampton County Emergency Management Services the donation of forty-four, forty-four Atwater Liquid Hand Sanitizers, five-gallon pails, or the cases of VHD disposable face mask.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Heffner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Um, I believe we have a second one for emergency management. Mr. Myers?
Yes. Now therefore, be it resolved by Northampton County Council that it does hereby authorize the County Executive to accept on behalf of Northampton County Emergency Management Services the donation of thirty boxes of disinfectant wipes that contain twelve packages, ninety sheets per package, G and Y wipes.
Discussion? Call for the vote?
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Heffner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. And we have another.
Yes.
A donation. Mr. Heckman, would you read this for the County Government Center?
I have it. Oh, here it is. Uh, yeah, okay. Where, uh, all right. Whereas the family of the late attorney Joseph Fulmer would like to donate a memorial bench to be placed on the grounds outside of the Northampton County Government Center. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that it does hereby authorize the County Executive to accept on behalf of the County of Northampton a memorial bench in honor of the late Attorney Judge.
Thank you. Donate a discussion? Mr. Cusick?
Yeah, just a quick note. Uh, for those of you that don't know this, uh, Mr. Fulmer did in fact, uh, serve, uh, as, uh, as a solicitor, uh, in, in the absence of, um, uh, Mr. Lauer at times. Uh, and, uh, he, he was, uh, he was a, a good guy and, uh, he'll, he'll certainly be missed. Uh, he, he was, uh, he, he did counsel good, uh, even, uh, even though it was just a few times he appeared before us. Uh, so again, I miss him and, uh, um, I'm sorry for his family's loss. Thank you.
Mr. Myers?
I've known Josh and I, and I, father and my, went to school together. So I, 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 it would be really nice to honor him this way. I appreciate the thought. That's it.
Thank you. Call for the vote, please?
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Absolutely. Yes.
Ms. Fargo Heffner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Consideration of a 2021 contingency account transfer for County Council staff printers. Resolution, Mr. McGee, would you please read the resolution?
Absolutely. Thank you. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Northampton County Council that the sum of $880.05 shall be transferred from the 2021 contingency account for the purchase of desktop printers for County Council staff.
Is there discussion or questions? It's come to my attention that our staff computers have not been replaced for about thirty years, so I thought it would be a timely request. Call for the vote?
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Cusick?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Giovanni?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Heffner?
Yes.
Ms. Rinsky?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Okay. Consideration of a resolution regarding judicial redistricting. Ms. Rinsky, would you introduce the resolution?
Yes, thank you. Uh, now therefore, be it resolved that the Northampton County Council urges the members of the General Assembly elected to represent the citizens of the Commonwealth as well as the citizens of Northampton County to vote against House Bill 196, now known as House Bill 38, and oppose any proposed referendum calling for an amendment to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, allowing for the creation of regional judicial districts, as well as any similar legislation. Copies of the resolution should be sent to the members of the General Assembly representing communities in Northampton County.
Discussion of the resolution?
Um, I'd just like to say why I'm bringing this forward. Um, I had the opportunity to talk to Mario Scivello's office. I did not get to talk to him, but I talked with him with a group of people. And one of the issues that he raised, or one of the issues that he said, or his political director raised up was that he hasn't heard any opposition for this. And there are a lot of unintended consequences and implications to such leg- legislation that would gerrymander the districts. You heard, I guess, two people at the beginning of this meeting. The legislature did vote on this bill earlier this week and it was tabled. That means the referendum will not go on the ballot for the, um, primary election. But that does mean that it could possibly go on the ballot in November. And I think all of us know that a November election is much more well-attended than a primary. This is dangerous legislation because it basically makes the courts in service to the legislature. The courts need to be independent and we need, as voters, to be able to vote not by district, but by state, who are legis, who our judges are. Uh, otherwise, this undermines the American system of checks and balances in Pennsylvania. Also, I think this bill, or HB 38 emphasizes location over qualification. The idea is that this would bring somehow more geographic diversity. But that's not necessarily the case, because some of the, uh, lawyers from rural areas or who went to college in rural areas are now practicing law in Allegheny County or in Philadelphia. And we need this safeguard to partisan gerrymandering. The law should not be interpreted colloquially. And that is one of the things that has been brought up, that the Russ Diamond, the person who proposed this, the legislator who proposed this, said, there are different philosophies on how to apply law based on where you grew up. The law is the law. You go to law school to learn the law. You go to law school to learn the law, but you should not interpret the law based on how you grew up. That would mean that, well, I'm, I'm going to stop there and just leave it out for conversation.
Mr. Myers?
I find this to be extremely scary that I happen to agree with Tara on two things tonight. This, 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 this thing is, is, is like a cancer. To me, it's no better way to describe it than as gerrymandering at the highest that you could possibly do. You, you are just cutting off the throats of too many of the people. We've done this long before all of us were born, that we allowed, as each Pennsylvania, to vote for a person, and that person would have to go statewide to get elected. If it ain't broke, don't fix it, and I'm going to agree that we need to support this resolution.
Thank you. Mr. Kuzic?
Yeah, uh, real quick, um, I, you know, I've read about this. Uh, I, I think that, uh, this is an ill-conceived, uh, attempt to bring some, um, accountability to the judicial branch. Uh, I think if Mr. Diamond wanted to do that, a, a more appropriate way to, to, to move on that, that I would support, would be the elimination of the retention election. Uh, because, uh, we, we have, uh, our MDJs, they run every six years. Uh, that, that's accountability. Uh, I think, uh, the, the fastest way, uh, to, to hold someone accountable is, is to make them run in a real election. So, while I agree, uh, with Ms. Zerinsky that, uh, that this is, uh, an ill-conceived attempt, uh, I, I, I do believe that, uh, that, that we, we should have more accountability, uh, in Pennsylvania, and I think that that can be better achieved by the ballot box, uh, real elections, not, not a retention where, where nobody really knows, uh, and, and most people just check yes regardless, so thank you.
Mr. Heckman?
Yeah, I, I have to, to, first of all, yeah, who, nobody likes Jerry, I mean, I don't, I don't like gerrymandering, I guess I shouldn't speak for everybody. Um, and some of the worst gerrymandering is by our state and federal representatives. I wish we'd pass a resolution which would ask them to stop. The only time you see bipartisanship in Harrisburg and Washington is when they're protecting each other's seats. Uh, th- then they're all for it. So, I mean, a, a couple of things with this, I, would the referendum be, is the referendum, the, the, what's being proposed, would that be a statewide referendum?
Yeah, oh, sure.
I, I mean, he- here's where I get torn, and, and I have to admit it. Just like when this commissioner or council thing came up. And I didn't really say whether I thought commissioner was great or councilperson was great. I was a councilperson more than I was, I'd be a commissioner, and I will be. But I, I always have trouble when we don't want the people to vote on something. That we take the view in our country that, that, that if we turn something over to the people, that somehow they'll screw it up. Uh, frankly, I think elected officials screw it up a lot more than the people do, who vote. Uh, so, so, I mean, it's sort of saying, well, we want to protect you from yourself. Uh, that, that sort of concerns me. Uh, I don't know much about this, and I have to be very honest. I really don't know a great deal about, uh, what Mr. Diamond, that John brought up, proposed. So, on the face of it, I, I guess I could support it because I don't like gerrymandering in any form. Uh, s- a- and so, in that sense, uh, sure, I, I will say this, I mean, I don't know why, a- and, and Tara, you know, I've had this discussion publicly and with you in the past. Passing these resolutions, asking state people, it's like they need our cover. I mean, they've got staffs, th- they, they have money. Uh, our resolution doesn't really have any power. It's just saying, hey, we think this is a bad idea. And you know I've told you this, I think most of our resolutions end up in garbage cans. I mean, the thing is, uh, because we got a lot going on at the county level. But, um, so, no, I don't, I don't think the, the best way to approach this is, is was brought up earlier is to, uh, get into balkanizing the judiciary. I, I, I agree with that. I think that we start breaking it down, we want to judge that suits our purpose. I mean, when we got rid of the fairness doctrine in media, now we have an outlet that will, it's like ice cream flavors. You can go to an outlet that'll tell you exactly what you want to hear. So, I mean, I'll, I'll support it, but I just want to say I just have a difficult time opposing anything that's going to be a referendum that goes to the people ultimately. Because ultimately, they're the boss, not us, not the state reps, not the senators. Uh, but I don't like the idea of monkeying with the judiciary. So, they, if it were something other, but based on the fact is the judiciary, I am going to support your resolution. Uh, I, 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 I just, uh, I'm just concerned. I don't know a lot about this, to be honest with you. I guess I didn't do my homework on this particular issue, but.
Could educate you offline about it if you'd like to know more.
Yeah, that's, that's okay. I mean, I'm going to support it. I, I just hope, I would like our state representatives and state senators, uh, to, to, uh, take care of these things in the best way possible and not have to rely on county council or county commissioners to tell them how to do their jobs. But, uh, I will support your resolution.
Any other discussion or comments?
I just want to make one final comment, that, um, in a, in a representative democracy, I think it's important that the people who are represented get heard. And when we spoke, this group spoke with, uh, Senator Scavella, his biggest point was that he didn't hear any opposition from anybody. And this is why I think it's important that county council votes on resolutions such as this, because this judicial ma- gerrymandering will affect our elections. It will affect how redistricting goes in the future, because the judiciary can ultimately decide where the districts lie. So, this is actually very important to, uh, should be important to us, should be important to our, um, voters and to our constituents. And if this resolution raises awareness about this for more than just our county council, I think that in itself i- is enough, and then if it gives our council a voice that is part of that representative democracy, I think that too is very important.
I'd like to make a comment, if that's okay. Uh, I normally would not want to vote on something like this, because I would say it's out of our purview, but when you said that he heard no, no opposition, the first time you said it, you know, that piqued my interest, and we all know what happened to the district gerrymandering, how ridiculous that was, and it was our judiciary that thankfully was able to get in there, stop it, and make an appropriate change and realign it. So, if the judiciary was gerrymandered, we would not have that buffer and that protection. So, I will support this resolution, just so that there's actually one voice out there that did say no.
Ms. Hefner?
Yes, sir.
Did I offend, offend just about every elected state and federal representative?
I don't know. I don't, I don't, I don't know. Uh, you know, we can discuss that in your session after the meeting. How's that?
I, 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 you know, I mean.
I, I wasn't offended, but you know, no, I just, I heard what she said, and, you know, my, my point was, you know.
Oh, I don't care. I mean, you know, I wish they'd do their jobs as well at everything as they do making sure that their districts or their, or their areas are safe, uh, come election time. So, I, I've said that to them in person, and I'll say it online. I'm a local official, so, you know, whatever.
Okay, so maybe we should just call for the vote. If there's, I'll give it one more pass. Anybody, Mr. McGee, anybody else want to make a comment, or no, we're good? Call for the vote.
Ms. Zerinsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro.
No.
Mr. Giovanni.
No.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Myers.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Hefner.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
You.
You're muted, John.
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of seven to two.
Thank you. Um, is there any other new business to discuss? Hearing none, are there any council committee reports?
Ah.
Mr. Heckman?
Uh, yes, uh, you, wait, did I get that right? Yes, Human Services met uh, tonight. Uh, there was a great deal of discussion about, uh, Gracemont and, uh, the drug and alcohol division, uh, and some of the outreach happening with aging and the money uh, that, and grants that are coming forward, and, uh, it was very informative, uh, and, uh, so I would hope that if, uh, you didn't get a chance to hear it, uh, if you would check the minutes from the meeting, I think you'll find, uh, a lot of information there that, that you may find, uh, helpful to you, and that's all.
Thank you. Any other committee reports, Mr. Myers?
Not a committee report, a request, and the, the following Wednes- two weeks from now, Wednesday, we will have a course of corrections, and there will be a presentation by the Rick.
Wednesday?
Yes.
What time?
Linda, am I correct?
Thursday at three thirty, on the eighteenth.
Two weeks from today.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Yes.
Okay. At three thirty?
Yes. They will be making a presentation, and if all goes well, I might be even making a recommendation that we actually go up there and actually see how it works. Field trip, all council.
Field trip.
I'm not going there. Any co- any committee, there's, there's so much filtering going on right now, I can't even tell you. Any council committee reports? None? Oh, Mr. Kuzic, I apologize, yes.
Not, not a committee report, but just a request for Mr. Myers Committee. Um, a- as, uh, as I had mentioned previously, uh, we know that, uh, there was no grant award, uh, for the jail project, so um, my hope is that we can get some feedback from the administration as to, you know, how they uh, want to move forward, or, or if they even intend to, uh, with, with that.
Thank you.
Can we make sure that request is on, Linda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving to council, I'm sorry, Mr. Heckman, go ahead.
Can I make a request, and I, I apologize, I didn't do it under new business, but it has to do with what we heard. Um, the, the resolution we tabled regarding elections. Could we, I, I, and I don't know if, if Ms., uh, Cozy could possibly touch base with Mr. Myers. I'd, I'd love to hear, to have more of a, a follow-up on that, so we don't just let it languish on, on the idea that it's tabled, because things can just die on the table. I would hope that maybe we could have a, a discussion and see if there's some kind of way we can come to a, uh, a, a meeting of the minds on, on how we could proceed, and that's my request, that's all.
Wait, she should, uh, who would you like her to talk to? I'm confused.
So am I.
Well, uh, no, I mean, could, could we, I, I don't know how we would do it. If there's a committee structure that could handle it, uh, where we could maybe delve into this issue uh, with, in a little more detail, as opposed to just leaving it hang on the table and never brought up again. Because I think she brought up some good points, Mr. Myers brought up some excellent points. I'd like to s- I, 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 in my mind, I thought, wow, you know, it's tabled, which I agree with, but I'd hate to see it just sit there, because there were good points brought up on both regarding both.
Wouldn't that?
Right, well, we could discuss, you know, that we need to put it in governance, and we need to have a governance committee regarding it versus just bringing it off the table at council. We can discuss that, or we could consider either way.
Thank you. I agree with that.
I agree.
Any liaison reports? Ms. Zerinsky?
Um, I attended the farmland preservation meeting this week. Um, at the time of the meeting, there, it was seventeen thousand four hundred and forty-nine point one hundred and sixty-four acres preserved on two hundred and fourteen farms. By the end of next week, there will be two more farms preserved, bringing the total to two hundred and sixteen farms and seventeen thousand five hundred and one point thirty-two acres.
Slow down those numbers, how much? Seventeen thousand?
Seventeen thousand five hundred and one point thirty-two acres. And the applications are due in March. We had ex- I had expressed before that those applications were extended. They're due in March, and they will be ranked, uh, accordingly.
Where are the two farms coming from, Tara?
What did you just say?
The two farms that we're picking up. Wh- where are they?
Um, I know that they're called the Duval Farm and the Stefanic Farm. I believe that they're in the Slate Belt. The, uh, Cooker Farm, uh, is in Moore Township. That's the one that's going to be preserved this week. That's twenty-five acres. Um, I believe that the Duval and the Stefanic Farm are up towards Slate Belt too, but I didn't write down where they were.
Okay. Get back, let us know where they are. Tom, do you know where they are?
I believe they're both in Slate Belt. I don't know exactly where they are.
Yeah. I s- I know where they are on a map.
I'm sorry.
Do we have any other liaison reports?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yep. All right, the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission met last Thursday night at seven o'clock. And they have a, uh, they have a, a session coming up. It's, um, it's a presentation roundtable on Tuesday, February sixteenth, and it has a lot to do with the COVID nineteen vaccine. Uh, both county executives from Lehigh and Northampton County will be there, as well as Dr. Jeffrey Gerang, an M.D. from St. Luke's University. I'm not sure if I read properly. Uh, you, if you want more information, you can go to lvpc.org, but I think it's going to last an hour. Also, along the lines of that meeting, they had, uh, they had a traffic study that they did recently, um, post-COVID, or not post-COVID, I wish, um, during COVID, uh, they started out looking at the traffic in March to December. Uh, they studied, uh, Interstate seventy-eight, State Route thirty-three, and State Route three oh nine. And, and the bottom line is, the traffic study was down, so, um, it was down by, you know, thousands of cars in a lot of the, in a lot of the, uh, now, the interstate, uh, wasn't down as far. Uh, they did, they did talk about truck traffic, and again, I'm going to direct you to the, to the website, LVPC. It's a very good website. They do a really good job, uh, putting their website together. There's a lot of statistics. There's another piece that they talked about also on housing. Uh, and actually, the new housing, uh, requests are, uh, are rising in the valley uh, for housing, all different types of housing, which is kind of good, because, you know, affordable housing is needed, as we know. Uh, they also put their online application, they put an online application, they put a application online for sub-development and land development. So, uh, that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Council clerk report?
Nothing.
Council solicitor, where's my spinoni?
Nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
One second.
I saw Myers and Lot, all in favor?
Aye.
Be safe.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Happy forty-eighth wedding and.